Sure.
Thank you for gaveling us in. Also, under recognitions and awards, Jerry Morphil is being recognized today for has to be the longest-serving member of any commission that the city has ever had. Jerry's been with the port since it started in 1987. So I had our historian, Mr. Danker, put together a few of the accomplishments while Jerry Morphil was on the port since 1987. I'll just, I'll highlight a few, I'll highlight them all, why not? Eighty, after eighty-seven, how many years is that? I mean, I can't count back that many years, but it's forty-three years, thirty-three, thirty-four years. Dang. So some of those accomplishments over the course of Jerry serving on the port were the Holland Inn in 1990, Complete Packaging Services Building, the Walker Warehouse Building, Joseph Company Building, Austin Public Library Town Center in 1995, Walmart Area Land, Hormel Corporate South Edition, Hormel Institute Phase One Downtown Revitalization from '07 to 2020, Hormel Institute Phase Two Expansion in 2014, the SPAM Museum in '15, Oak Park Mall in 2015, former Hy-Vee Grocery Store from 2018 to 2019, and now New Tech, which we're breaking ground on tomorrow in 2021. I will give this with Jerry so he has some more detailed, you know, his history on his accomplishments while serving on the board, but that is above and beyond the call to ask a citizen to be serving that much time and to do it with a lot of moving parts, but think of the legacy of what you've created or helped create on that board over the course of those thirty-four years with the amount of structures that will stand for a long, long time and the amount of development that created a lot of jobs for people in this community. So as our brand-new mayor and as a council member former, I can't thank you enough for serving that kind of time. So I do have a key to the city for you, but I'd like to ask Jerry McCarthy if he wanted, as the chair of the board, if he wants to say a few words in your honor.
Yes. I just want to thank Jerry for all of the years and words of wisdom and kindness and keeping us grounded on some of these board meetings that we've struggled with some of these projects. So thank you for everything. Enjoy your retirement.
And Jerry, if you would, I'll meet you down right here and I'll present the key to the city and you can certainly bring Evy up with you. She's obviously a supportive spouse to allow that kind of time on this commission, so, and certainly, any words you have, Jerry, then I'll give you the key to the city.
Actually, I have been retired for a number of years already, but it's been great. I appreciate being on, named on the, on the council, or not the council, but the Port Authority. Oh, it's interesting, excuse me, too much cigarette, I guess. But it's, it's been fun and it's been great. And of course, Evan and I have lived here, we came to Austin in 2015. Is that right, Ev?
In 2015? No.
Two thousand...
What is it, Austin?
Yeah, we came to Austin, two thousand...
Nineteen sixty-four.
Fifty-four, fifty-four.
Sixty-four.
You know, Austin's such a beautiful town and it's more beautiful because of the Port Authority and because of the council. But, you know, we, we lived in two other towns before, like similar to this, before we came to Austin, and that was Albert Lee and that was Fairbowl, and they're both nice towns, but when you really appreciate Austin after you've been here, you know, we had five children raised here, they all, some went to Pacelli, some went to Austin High, but they all got good educations. They're all out on their own. Only one lives here in Austin yet, but they all getting along fine, but it's been great and, you know, I enjoyed all of this. It's nice to be able to be in the inside of some of these things rather than read it in the paper, things like that, but I appreciate the notice here.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Right on. Well, Jerry, I can't...
Oh, yeah, I have to introduce my wife, Evy, you know.
I'm sure everybody knows Evy. She doesn't do much for the city either, really.
You know, Evy's been active, quite active too in Austin.
Sure.
And, you know, I, when I, I was in the bank for like fifty-some years and nobody ever noticed me as a banker, you know, when they saw me. But now people see me and they say, oh, aren't you Evy's husband? She's been active and she's been good and we appreciate that.
Sure. Right on. Power couple of Austin right there. Well, thank you. I'll meet you down front and I, as the, as this is my first presentation of a key as mayor and I can't imagine anybody more worthy, so if you want to meet me, right below... Thirty-four years here, there's your key. This is just a more limited description of all of your background for Austin. It's every door now. Yeah. Yeah, you'll have them more. All right, we're going to move on to item number four, which is entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under petitions and requests, item number five is a motion approving the $1,000 donation to the Fourth Avenue Fest coming from contingency funds.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number six is a resolution accepting donations to the City of Austin, and those donations are $370 from Pat McGarthy, or McGarvey, from, for the 2021 flowers and $2,500 from Hormel Foods for the Bike Club. So with those donations, I'd entertain a resolution, accepting.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number seven is a resolution applying for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan. Looks like a motion for seven A to be authorizing the city administrator to sign assurances of compliance with civil rights requirements and compliance with awards, terms, and conditions. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll take two of these together, a resolution and motion. First one is to the League of Minnesota Cities, has asked us, or suggested that we have a paper trail to document our funds for the ARPA funds. We're scheduled to receive 2.8 million. Our calculator, interestingly enough, says we could qualify for as much as 4.1 million in distribution to the City of Austin, but that's a little more of the background information. We need a motion to accept the funds and then also approval of a motion to sign the compliance documents that go along with it. Council action is requested to approve those.
So taking the resolution first. Yes, please. Applying for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, entertain a resolution for that.
Craig, just quickly, what drives the gap between like the 4.1 and what we're actually getting?
That's a good question. 2.8 is based on a CDGB formula, so it's just a different formulation that they've come up with. The other one just is kind of the demonstrated need, I guess, and the other one is the basis of what, which Congress acted upon.
Got it. Thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a resolution for seven.
So moved the resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions. Sorry, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Next, Tom. Seven A is a motion authorizing the city administrator to sign the assurances of compliance with civil rights requirements and compliance with award terms and conditions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number eight is a series of motions reviewing, reviewing an ordinance for the adoption of a cable franchise agreement contingent upon payment of attorney's fees. For our motion for eight A is for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Eight B is a ordinance for adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a, it's a voiceful. Roll call, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight C is a motion publication of the summary of ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Eight D is a resolution approving an indefeasible right of use agreement with MetroNet.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Do we, could we have, I mean, Craig or Mr. Grogan speak to that indefeasible right of use agreement? I mean, we had it in our backup material, so we know what it is, but the public watching or listening might not understand what that's about and we should maybe explain that.
Sure.
MetroNet had asked for some stipulations for the build-out. One of those is the right to use our right-of-way. As council recalls, we recently adopted a right-of-way ordinance which establishes fees for that. As a result, they wanted us to waive those rights in order to do the build-out, obviously a large financial commitment for them to build out a fiber network in the community, and as a result, they wanted some accommodation in the permitting fees, so we're agreeing to do that. In exchange for that, we have dedicated fiber lines that go to the wastewater treatment plant, public works garage, and nature center, so that's kind of compensation back for the city. That also allows them to expedite build-out within the community so that they can get moving quicker, but other than that, I certainly can turn it over to Mr. Grogan if he has additional clarification on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I don't have significant more to add. I just maybe described the title, "indefeasible right of use." Because these fibers are going to be commingled with other fibers that MetroNet's putting into the ground, it's, it's not possible for the city to own its own separate sheet of fibers. So this is a phrase that's often used in communications contracts where you own, you'll basically have ownership, what we call it, an indefeasible right of use, to use these two fibers throughout the term of MetroNet's franchise and any renewal thereof. It's, so it's a substitute for them simply building it and then deeding it over to you. And again, fairly common in the communications industry because these fibers are often commingled with one another.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one, one other item of clarification, just for the ordinance. There were a few on Exhibit B of the ordinance of where free drops would be provided for the cable service, and we did a few adjustments that to accommodate the school district learning center out on, towards West Oakland by St. Edwards. We added the nature center building, so we did have a few additions to that as well, just for the record.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine is a resolution approving a grant award for flood property purchase at 304 Twenty-Second Street Southwest. Stephen, Mr. Lang?
Well, my video does not seem to be working tonight. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
The item number nine on the agenda is a grant application that we completed and we were successful. It is a federal Homeland Security Emergency Management grant that will cover up to 75% of the property acquisition. Some key items in the grant agreement is that 75% or up to $202,937.25, which again represents 75% of the project cost for acquisition of the home and demolition of the property. The effective date is 3/18 of 2021. Expiration date is three years later, 3/18 of 2024. We anticipate being able to complete this project very easily in that time. There will be deed restrictions that are put on the property after we have acquired it, and we are required with any of our contracts that we do for demolition to include prevailing wages and some lobbying certification from contractors. So our, our agent that we are working with is Jennifer Davis through the State Hazard Mitigation Office and myself, and at this time, we would request council approval of the grant agreement and authorize myself, city engineer, to execute any of the necessary documents. With that, do you have any questions?
Counsel? If not, a resolution from number nine, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Tom?
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution approving Minnesota Department of Transportation maintenance contract for Highway 105. Stephen?
Every two years, we enter into an agreement with MinDOT for some general maintenance on Highway 105, which would be Oakland Avenue West from 12th Street out to I-90 and then 12th Street Southwest from Oakland Avenue South to the Turtle Creek Bridge. Many citizens think that this is a city road as it is. They expect the road to be plowed of snow and potholes to be taken care of just like any other road in the city. We wouldn't want to bypass this one as others. So essentially, we enter into this agreement with MinDOT, which allows us to get some reimbursement for those maintenance activities, which generally the public would expect of us. So this agreement is for fiscal year 2022, which would, which begins here on July 1st, and also fiscal year 2023. The amount is nearly $11,000 for each year, and we would recommend approval of this two-year agreement.
Counsel, any questions? If not, entertain a resolution for number 10.
So moved the resolution. Second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 11A is rescinding the resolution of number 16295, which I think we just passed last meeting for a 13-minute dollar request for the bonding bill, so I'd entertain a resolution to rescind that amount.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, and in its place, we're asking for 14.5 million on a different bonding request for the wastewater treatment plant. Stephen, do you have anything further on that?
Just to add that, as noted in your memorandum, this came about due to just concerns with the volatility related to construction materials, labor, and inflation, why we are making this request or increasing our request.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a resolution for 18.
So moved the resolution.
I second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moving on to 12A is a resolution approving the final plat for Nature's Ridge Third Edition. Holly?
Mayor and council members, you reviewed preliminary plat for the same development May 17th, which was approved. The final plat is substantially similar, and during the June 15, 2021, meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed Nature Ridge Third Plat. Again, this area consists of 26 lots covering approximately 11 and a half acres. It's located west of the Hormel Nature Center. Once the final plat is approved, this will allow the developer to be able to sell the lots shown in the plat. The, I'll talk about the development agreement a little bit as well. After review, the planning commission with seven members present voted unanimously to recommend approval with seven As. Approval was contingent upon compliance review by city staff and Austin Utilities, completion of the development agreement, approval of extension, the extension of 17th Street Northeast by Austin Port Authority, and approval of petitions for gas, water, and electric by Austin Utility. The plat and development agreement do meet the city and Austin Utilities requirements, and the Port Authority and Austin Utility Board were able to meet just prior to the planning commission meeting and approve the road extension and petitions respectively. The, the development agreement, which was a contingency of pass, approving the final plat, contains the obligations of the city and Nature Ridge properties. It lays out the various standards and conditions that control the development of the subdivision as well as security should the developer fail to complete the project or comply with the terms of the agreement. Do you have any questions? There's a number of attachments showing details of the project and the development agreement as well as the final plat.
Counsel, any questions for Holly?
No, great progress.
Okay, looking for resolution for 12A.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Item number 12B is a resolution approving the development agreement for Nature's Ridge Third Edition that Holly just spoke of.
So moved the resolution. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under bid openings and awards, number 13 is receiving bids for pavement striping. 13A is awarding the bid, looking for resolution. Stephen, before we go to resolution, Stephen, any comments on that?
Yeah, this is something new for us this year with the current vacancy in our sign and traffic department. This work is normally done by that position, so with that being vacant, we, we look to try to fill the void by hiring a contractor to do some of the work. We, we're easily able to identify kind of our main line, striping, all the center lines, striping throughout the community, which accounts for about 25 miles of dashed and solid lines, both yellow and white. We took quotes for this work with AAA Striping Service Company being the low quote at $8,800, and we would recommend awarding this project to AAA Striping with the funds coming out of the current cost savings from that sign and traffic department being vacant. There is other work that's still going on with our existing street department staff, all of the miscellaneous things like crosswalks, turn arrows, yellow curb painting, parking lots, all those miscellaneous things that are harder to quantify, we're still doing that with existing staff, but wanting to get a big bulk of the work done with the center line striping, so we'd recommend moving forward with this quote.
Counsel, any questions? If not, entertain a resolution for 13A.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14A, we're looking for resolution, receiving bids for 10th Place Northeast Sanitary Sewer Extension. Stephen?
This is a unique area located along Service Road, along Interstate 90, just east of the new Quick Trip Truck Stop, and it's a unique situation where there are two properties that have been within the city limits for many years, even decades, and they have never had sewer service mainly because of the limited access with I-90. So as we work to develop a project to extend sanitary sewer to these properties, they also become unique because we're only able to recoup costs from one side of the road with I-90 being located on the south side. There's no properties there, and we're not able to recoup our costs through our, our sewer access charge. But in, in developing the project, there's, there's one, one of the two property owners requested this project, so we put it together and want to bring it to council, make sure you're aware of the cost impacts for, for this type of project. And the low bid on the project was 66, was Hodgman Drainage Company at $66,562.50. We'll be able to recoup about 50% of that if both property owners hook up. One of them has provided an email that we've attached that they are interested and they intend to hook up right away. We will be reaching out to the other property owner to see their need for hooking up. We'll also work with the county on that second business to determine if they have a viable septic system, which if they do not, that would trigger a requirement for them to hook up as well. But I just wanted to make sure on this project that council is aware that 50% has a potential to get reimbursement through hookup fees, and then the other 50%, we'll have to use just our general fund sewer dollars to fund the other 50%. So if council is in agreement with that, we would recommend awarding this project to Hodgman Drainage Company.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Counsel, any questions on 14A? I'll entertain a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Number 15 is a motion receiving bids for the 31st Street Southwest Street Reconstruction Project. 15A is supporting Moore County's intent to award bid and authorizing the use of state aid funding for the city's portion of the project. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, this is a, for me, this is an exciting project. We don't get to make realignment improvements like this very often, and we in the engineering department have been working closely with the county for the past year or so on this project, so it's great to see it be at this point and ready to move forward. And as we've presented to council in the past, it's a realignment of 31st Street Southwest to try and improve some of the curve radiuses in this area, and, and looking long-term, this project has the potential to increase viability of some of the properties and possible development in the area because of the improvement to the roadway safety and access for all sorts of vehicles, including larger truck traffic. So it's a partnership with the county where the city would, has worked to provide the property acquisition for the new roadway alignment, and also, we would provide stormwater pond and a stormwater outlet for the new roadway. The city system is currently extended at Sixth Avenue Southwest, and we would extend our existing city system out to Thirty First Street to accommodate an urban section with curb and gutter, pedestrian trail, street lighting, and in-road storm sewer work. Austin Utilities is also a part of this project as they will be constructing a new water main and two new gas mains as part of the project. And there also may be other utility companies doing work here as well, whether that be Charter, Freeborn Mower has some utilities in this area. So it's a very large project, a lot of people involved. The Moore County took bids on the project June seventeenth. The apparent low bidder was Yulin Brothers at just, at one, just one million one hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifteen cents. The city portion of that cost for that storm sewer and pond work that I touched on was three hundred and six thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and two cents. We are eligible to use state aid funding for our portion of it. And so we'd recommend supporting Moore County's intent to award this project to Yulin Brothers. The last thing for council to be aware of is we'll come back to you at a later date to work out the final details on the property acquisition. Where the pond is going to go is a property acquisition portion that we've talked with you about previously. But as the project works forward, we will then finalize that necessary area required and bring back those actual purchase costs for that area. So with that, we recommend authorizing the city to use state aid funds for our portion of work at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Any questions for Stephen? I'm looking for a motion for number, item number fifteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay. We're waiting on Detective Ellis and Ryan Life and Rudy the K-9 to be here. They'll be here shortly. So moving on, before they get here, is there any citizens here to address the council that are on the agenda? Lisa? Octavio? Want to say anything? Yeah, we're good. We're good. Hearing none. Honorary council member, we have Christopher on the Zoom call. Christopher, do you have any words for us today, or are you going to take a pass?
I'll take a pass.
That's always okay, Christopher. Thank you. Reports and recommendations? Craig?
The only thing I had, Senator Dorick reached out to me as the legislative session comes to a close and just let me know on the bonding request from the city, that the technical correction is probably the focus of the legislature at this point rather than the thirteen million that we'd requested. But we appreciated him keeping us in the loop. And if there's local projects that break out, that we certainly would hope that Austin could be included in that if that's the way things break. But otherwise, that's all I have.
Is the institute request part of that bonding bill too, or is that a different, next year?
They do. That one would probably be next year would be the expectation, if it's included.
Any department head reports?
No.
A city council?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Just wanted to congratulate Impact Austin and the folks that put the farmer's market together. I mean, just a fantastic turnout on Friday and great energy. I know I saw a lot of the folks from the council down there. And, you know, we're lucky to have that as a community and look forward to going back many times.
Excellent. Obala?
Um, Your Honor, a lot happening this weekend. So it's a World Refugee Day, and we had a historical event to this past week in Juneteenth, making, at a federal holiday, so it's being celebrated everywhere. So I had to go to Rochester and the ABC contacted me on Friday. So I was on the news for that. So just to share how this historical event for African-American, to have this as a federal holiday. And more importantly, this is my first Father's Day, so, which is awesome. So and I'm so happy to see me being tagged everywhere. Last year I was waiting, when will they tag me? But now I'm a father, so Happy Father Day to everyone. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Rebecca?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Just a shout out and a thanks to Sergeant Martin for giving me the opportunity to do a ride along. It was a quiet Friday night, which was a little boring for me, but I was good with it. So thanks to all the citizens for keeping it nice and quiet. I got to learn a lot about how our police department operates and really appreciated it.
All right. Thank you. Just once again, want to congratulate Jerry Morfeld and honor him for his years of service on the Port Authority. You just, that's what Austin's built on, is that volunteerism, that level of commitment that people have. And so thanks again to Jerry Morfeld for his years of service on the Port Authority. And now we're going to back up agenda to item number three because we have Detective Ellis here with Officer Can, Officer Rudy, and they won some big award. McKeek's going to tell us about it. But you didn't bring your chew toy, Ryan Life? No? Ryan can't make it. All right.
We certainly felt the same way. This wasn't a timing error on our part. We just don't want to take away from Jerry's key to the city ceremony. So I appreciate Derek coming in on his day off. Derek is our sole canine handler right now and has been for a number of years. He and his partner do a fantastic job for us. And when he transitioned from patrol into his role as a detective, we did have him keep the dog just because it's such an important partner for what we do. And again, we've historically been very proud of our canine program. Matt Holton, the entire time I was here, did a fantastic job. The United States Police Canine Association holds a series of trials and certifications. It's where we send our dogs for narcotics, for apprehension, and just everything we ask them to do in the field. This organization puts them through standardized testing so that when we do use a dog, we know it's going to do the things that we ask it to do. If we have it come up in court cases, we can show those certifications. And, you know, for attorneys and others, let them know that our dog is professionally certified. The USPCA is the organization most handlers are going to belong to. Our region is Region Twelve that we've belonged to for a number of years. Region eighteen does have some overlap. This is Region Twelve, like Minneapolis PD, Region eighteen, St. Paul?
Yeah, basically.
There's a little bit of a divide, but basically those regions serve agencies that large. And again, Derek's done historically very well. His father, if you recall, ran a dog for the Sheriff's Department for a number of years. Was it five national championships? Matt, I know, won one and got second. But at our region trials, his dad and Matt were always competitive in winning those awards. So for my purposes, Derek does a fantastic job for us. I know his dog is well-trained, well-certified, and he's always been competitive. And I've been very proud of him for that. But I know, I think with that lineage, it's a big deal for him this year. He did win first place overall in our region for patrol dog, which is a criminal apprehension, obedience, subject search, agility, and evidence search. He didn't put it on here, but I believe he got second in narcotics, correct? One ninety-nine out of two hundred, so someone just sneaked in in front of him. That was enough, though, for his dog to be the top dual-purpose dog, combining narcotics with apprehension. Again, keeping in mind that not all dogs are going to do both of those skills. So number one patrol, number two overall, sorry, number one overall, number two narcotics. His team placed first. And between the two regions, Region Twelve and Region eighteen, his score was also number one. So again, when you look at canines from the upper Midwest and sneaking into Canada, Derek won overall top dog this year, which again, incredible accomplishment. Couldn't be prouder of him. And I know, like I said, with where our department's been, I'm sure he feels very glad to kind of notch those awards too and match his dad, matches Matt. And I'm very happy for that to have happened for him as well. So congratulations, Derek. Excellent job.
Derek, congratulations. Do you have any comments to make?
Five to ten minute speech, please.
I appreciate your support. You know, it is just, it is a certification, so that's the big part of it. But, you know, the competitive part of it, of the certification getting, you know, number one or placing, I think is important too, just to show, you know, the level of quality of dog we have here in Austin.
Well, thanks for carrying on that lineage of creating great dogs. I appreciate it, Derek.
And as I said in the update, we definitely appreciate the council and administration's support. To carry a dog is, there are extra costs with it. And again, that's part of when we talk about our program historically. It has been the citizens, council, administration who've allowed us to run these. And we have had two dogs in the past. The reason we don't now is it is an incredibly demanding position to not only have and care an animal, for an animal, but it's several levels up from simply having a pet, the amount of time that you have to dedicate. And right now, we haven't been able to combine interest and capability yet with a second handler. So again, when you see these accomplishments, really is a lot of time and effort and flexibility on Derek and his family's part to be able to do this, and certainly Rudy's as well, so.
What was Rudy's treat? What was Rudy's treat for?
A ball?
Yeah. Did he get something extra, though, for first place? He must have got some, yeah, he must have got something special.
Extra time with the ball. I can't help but notice, Derek, that he's looking suspiciously at Mr. Dankert. He's got some, something going on there.
I told Stephen his tour would be the highlight of the night. Otherwise, we would have brought the bite sleeve in and let you guys run.
I don't know. When I told our kids that the police dog was coming, that's about the only time they've cared about a council meeting in two years.
Found five bucks to pet him.
Well, thanks. Thanks again, Derek. So just four more of them to match Dad, then? Is that what we're going for? You'll show him up.
Amazing.
Thanks. Yes, good job. All right. With that, we are going to entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, July sixth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty. So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you. Tom, do you want to say your dad before he leaves?
They do have Jimmy John sandwiches.
For the bus?
Yeah.
Is everyone able to go?
Wouldn't miss it.
Do you need somebody else to drive, Lansky?
I don't, I was just going to say, Ben Allen.
Okay.